Good evening. This is Chairwoman Julie Hen. I call to order the Board of Education of Baltimore County's public hearing on the superintendent's proposed FY 2023 operating budget. This evening's Board of Education meeting is being held virtually and broadcast through Microsoft Teams Live and through BCPSTV, Comcast Xfinity Channel 73, Verizon FiOS Channel 34. The registration form for the public hearing was available to the public online and closed at 1:00 PM today for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's hearing. Speakers' names will be called in the order of registration, and the next speaker's name will also be called and asked to be on deck and ready to provide their comments. While we encourage public input on the proposed FY 2023 operating budget this evening, this is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to the operating budget. I remind everyone that inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak on the superintendent's proposed FY 2023 operating budget. This public hearing is not the forum to speak on any other topics. I ask speakers to observe the three-minute limit and conclude remarks when time has expired and you hear the tone. The call will be ended if a speaker addresses specific student or employee matters or is commenting on matters not related to the superintendent's proposed FY 2023 operating budget. The first speaker tonight is Christine Phillips, who will be followed by Lena Amick.
May I begin?
Yes, Ms. Phillips. Good evening.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Hen, Vice Chair Pastor, Superintendent Williams, and Board. My name is Christine Phillips. I'm a fourth-year Spanish teacher at Woodlawn High School and hopefully a career-long educator. I want to emphasize two ways the Board's budget can make teaching and BCPS a more tenable career. Number one, pay paraeducators a living wage. Every paraeducator that I know has at least one other job and/or is in school to eventually do something else. Paraeducators are integral to the functioning of a school building and the learning of the students they serve. As a Spanish teacher, my class is often the only good grade that English language learners have because it's taught in their native language. In mainstream classes of 30-plus students, they get lost if they don't know how to advocate for themselves or aren't "good" at school. I have watched how a single ESAL paraeducator has drastically changed the outcomes for those students. Woodlawn was allocated one ESAL paraeducator position in the middle of the 2018-19 school year, my first-year teaching. Ms. E started making a measurable difference immediately. Some of the English language learners who had failed first quarter in English did an about-face. I asked them what had changed, and all of them said, "Ms. E." Three years later, her impact has only grown, but she's also in college classes to become a Spanish teacher because being a paraeducator does not serve the financial needs of her family in the long term. BCPS students need educators like Ms. E to be successful throughout their K-12 schooling. If we want to close the gap for ESAL students, BCPS must show that they value the work that paraeducators do by paying them a living wage. Number two, pay additional adult assistants what they're worth and offer them benefits. Adult assistants serve the BCPS students with the highest level of need and could make more money at Target or Amazon. They'd also probably have better benefits at either of those jobs. Just FMLA is not adequate. Woodlawn High School has one of the largest special education populations in the county, and we cannot retain AAs. In the past two school years, I've had students whose IEP required that they have an adult assistant for individualized support, but we didn't have one to give them. These two students were outside the general education classroom in classes of 15 students or less for every core subject, but are in mainstream settings, classes of 25 to 30 for electives like Spanish. I try my best to meet their needs on a daily basis, but I cannot effectively teach and perform the duties of an adult assistant. Additional adult assistants need benefits and a living wage to make the support they provide students more than just a temporary job. There will continue to be vacancies and retention issues if AAs can make more money and get better benefits working elsewhere. The new Blue Parent Funding does not specify competitive wages and benefits for education support professionals, but this budget can. Prioritize paying ESPs a living wage in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lena Amick.
Good evening, Chair Hen, Vice Chair Pastor, Superintendent Williams, and the Board. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Lena Amick. This is my fifth year teaching history to the incredible students at Boeing Mills High School. And like Christine, I hope to be a career-long educator and have spoken before this board about the challenges that have sometimes made me feel forced to abandon this career I've invested so much in. I'm heartened to see a budget proposal that adds 381.3 much-needed new positions, including paraeducators, school counselors, and nurse assistants. Investing in people is investing in our district's future. It's no surprise to this board that the workload of BCPS educators is crushing and is leading teachers to consider employment elsewhere. I'm here to speak as a teacher about how critical it is for our budget to prioritize two things: reducing teacher workload and providing professional compensation to all our employees. First, investing in educators' planning time. This means investing in enough FTEs and well-paid substitute positions to eliminate coverage for the system in which teachers and paraeducators are forced to give up our planning time during the day. As a high school teacher, I have one planning period a day, and even before the staffing shortage caused by the pandemic, like since I began teaching with BCPS, I was pulled from my planning period multiple times a week to substitute teach another class. This left me with 40 minutes in which to call parents, document interventions, grade and track data, send students' messages, and plan responsive lessons for the next day. Forty minutes. Of course, I don't give up doing those things. I donate my time to this district at the end of each duty day for my students. This isn't to celebrate how hard we work as teachers, but to emphasize that a system that raises the bar for our students is not a system that expects its employees to donate hours of their time each day, especially so many of us have responsibilities outside of work. We have such a great start for staffing on this budget, especially for our overburdened special educators. I think we can and must go further with the goal of providing all teachers with a full, uninterrupted planning period each day. Other school systems do this, and I believe we can too. Second is to invest highly in all our education professionals, especially our paraeducators. The addition of the FTEs in this proposed budget is critical, and we need to pay paraeducators a living wage so they can invest in a career in BCPS. The paraeducators I work with are invaluable to my classroom. They're able to connect meaningfully with students and give that special attention and academic support that closes gaps for our students. But I've almost never, in my four-year-and-a-half-years of teaching, had a paraeducator be able to stay in my room for the entire year because with our shortages, they're often pulled to cover standardized testing or attend to other classes, leaving my students without the support they need. And then often, paraeducators go to work second and third jobs in the evening to make ends meet. For my students to have the consistency they need to meet with success in the classroom, our ESPs must have the financial support they need, and this must be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Diana Bergman, and on deck will be Bill Adams.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Diana Bergman, and I'm a taxpayer of the United States of America of Maryland and Baltimore County. Did you know that the Baltimore County Public Schools' operating budget consists of federal, state, and county taxpayer dollars? In FY 2023, the operating budget will have 86% dedicated for the salaries of our teachers and staff. Did you know that the school system now has 66% of children of color and 32% children that are white? Our children in BCPS should have an operating budget that reflects the ability to hire educators that look like them so they could be motivated, encouraged, and supported in their education as they grow. A Board of Education is 73% white, making decisions of the operating expenses. Decisions like exceeding over $100,000 of taxpayer dollars in their own operating budget. I am recommending that FY 2023 operating budget has a change party put in place to avoid spending habits that are criminal in nature. Like in FY 2019, they went over 7% of their allowed operating expense. And then in FY 2020, they were 68% over. We can't waste money like that of taxpayer dollars, and we honestly can't afford it. Our kids deserve better. Our educators deserve better. We should be handling our taxpayer funds appropriately and be able to support our students' education. We should be setting proper examples for our students in BCPS. We shouldn't be sharing them that we do things illegally or break the law. That's unacceptable. So for the FY 2023 budget, I am demanding that we spend an increase that 86% of the budget to provide salaries and support for our educators that look just like our BCPS students. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Adams, and on deck will be Cindy Sexton.
Hey, good evening. I have two quick topics, but I'll just share one point first. My first point is, I would not do a call with my customers without my camera on. I just think that's totally copping out. All right, on to my two points. First, high level on COVID. There have been, as of this morning, 2,104 deaths in Baltimore County that are supposedly with COVID. If you listen to the CDC, which I know all of you on the board do very closely, over 70% of those 2,100 deaths have four or more comorbidities, and most were old. I bring this up because there's 850,000 residents in Baltimore County, so 2,100 deaths, over 850,000 residents. Is a death rate of .245%. And if you flip that around, that means 99.7% of everyone will be just fine, as I was through an experience with COVID. It was nothing more than a cold. So I beg you to stop canceling everything for these children. You're damaging their mental health and well-being. Let dances move forward. Let sports happen. Let after-school activities take place.
Could I ask that all participants please mute their phones?
I don't know who's talking, but the second point is enrollment. Baltimore County paid a million bucks to Public Works, and in that... Not sure if you're there or not. Mute this.
Can we please mute the audio?
What is going on? Like literally, what is going on? The second point involves enrollment. You paid a million bucks for Public Works to give you a consulting report. In that report, Exhibit ES1 on Page 2, it says there are 109,000 students enrolled in Baltimore County schools as of 9/30/20. If that fact is incorrect, I'd like someone to correct it. Again, it was over a million bucks paid for that report. I know we keep using the number 111,000, but that's significantly different than 109,000. The next point is, the FY 22 budget put forth a 6,000-student increase. Many callers like myself called in and said that was ridiculous. When it was proposed, turns out it was. We added 36 students. We were off by over 99%. This year's projected enrollment increase is 3,000. Again, I don't believe we know how many students are currently enrolled as of September 30th, and I don't think we'll be adding the 3,000 students. So I would ask for efficient use of tax dollars and discontinue any type of maintenance of effort.
Ms. Adams, were you able to complete your remarks? I know that your time was interrupted.
Yeah, I mean, this is a show, man. I'm done. Thanks.
If you need additional time, I ask that it be restarted if you need it. I do apologize for the interruptions. Okay, next, we have Cindy Sexton.
Good evening, Chairwoman Hen, Vice Chair Pastor Dr. Williams, and members of the Board. Way back in Dr. Williams's report on the 100-day entry plan, he stated that our priorities must squarely focus on what is best for our students in every neighborhood and school across the county. Those words are still applicable. You've heard me say that effective teachers are the most important factor in contributing to student achievement, and that statement is also a BCPS core value. You have also heard me speak numerous times about the need to recruit and retain educators. This budget prioritizes people who have the interactions with our students most, those people who are charged with building relationships, nurturing, and yes, of course, instructing our students. This is a bold budget that puts people first and tabcoo supports the budget. I want to be sure the system has in place the plan for attracting, recruiting, and hiring the staff funded in this budget, as well as for current vacancies. A properly-staffed school will help improve learning outcomes and help address discipline concerns. This budget does move us toward that goal. We continue to be in unprecedented situations where the goalposts keep moving. Through it all, our educators are there for our students, doing all they can to meet their needs: social, emotional, mental, physical, and yes, academic needs too. Now more than ever, we need to make sure that our focus is on the people who made a difference in the lives of our students, our educators, of course, but let us also remember all the support staff who work with our students. Please make sure they are also fairly compensated as well. I hope the Board supports this budget because when those positions are filled, it will make a difference for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lloyd Allen, and on deck will be Fanya O'Donoghue.
Good evening, Chair Hen, Vice Chair Pastor, Superintendent Williams, and Board. Thank you for your time. I'm Lloyd Allen, a special educator in mathematics in Baltimore County. Earlier this year, I gave public comments about the importance of the support of social emotional learning through the lens of a report from the National Association of School Psychologists, which existed ratios of one psychologist and two school counselors per 500 students, as well as one school social worker per 400 students. I also want to say that as a teacher of mathematics, I make mathematical mistakes a great deal of the time. I'm ready to be wrong and ask for grace if there are things that I missed or misunderstood in the documents. As I read this budget, I notice a breakdown of positions related to mental and physical health on Page 14 and the verbiage "an increase of 69 FTEs and $4.1 million for counseling, health, psychological, and social work positions to support a safe and supportive environment" on Page 86. Adding up the positions on Page 14, I do get a total that is one-tie of 70. However, the psychological position is a fiscal assistant for psychological services. Fiscal assistants are very important, but if I'm reading this correctly, we still need actual psychologists. The only additional psychological service provider FTE that I'm finding is 3/5 of a psychologist for Northeast Elementary on Page 198. Page 120 of the budget identifies the increase of 32 school counselor FTEs as part of a three-year plan and also identifies a new FTE for a school counselor at Northeast Elementary. However, if my math is correct, at the end of three years, this will put us at 84% of the way to the standard of one counselor per 250 students from the NASP recommendations of 2013. This shows significant progress, but does not quite close the gap. Please let the NASP recommendations be our true north. Using a low estimate enrollment of 115,000, we should be aiming for 460 school counselors, 230 school psychologists, and 287 school social workers. We appear to be addressing 28% of our shortfall in school counselors, 6% of our shortfall of school social workers, and a negligible portion of our shortfall in school psychologists. It is true that the NASP recommendations do not include social emotional learning teachers, and that when properly implemented, their roles may begin to close the gap for student needs in these areas. Finally, I'm pleased to see the increases in FTEs for health staff and most special education and related service roles. More staffing in special education should reduce the size of caseloads, which should have a positive impact on the quality of service provided to students. I recognize that we are making progress, even if we can't yet mark these goals as achieved. In particular, thank you for identifying positions for elementary IEP chairs. Now I wonder whether we can raise the bar by considering IEP chairs for 12-month employment. Thank you for your time and patience. I appreciate the effort that goes into preparing to prepare for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Fanya O'Donoghue, and on deck will be Roa Hassan.
It doesn't look like she's signed one.
Thank you, Ms. Gober. Roa Hassan?
Good evening, Superintendent Williams, Chairwoman Hen, and members of the BCPS Board of Education. My name is Roa Hassan. I'm a junior at Perry Hall High School, and it is both an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to speak to you all again today. Today, you will begin to make essential decisions on BCPS's operating budget and allocate funds to supplement the most essential part of these systems: the students. Students deserve not only the opportunity to succeed, but the right to excel. Fighting for students means fighting for every single student regardless of their background. It means giving them an opportunity to academically flourish, explore their passions, and discover their undeniable power. That is what the operating budget signifies. It is not another number to keep in an archive. It is a real quantity that impacts me. It impacts the students here today, as well as the students who are not. Students have shared their concerns with you. They're currently sharing their voices. We've told you what we need, the changes we want to see, and I truly hope you've taken not only the time to listen, but to reflect and apply those voices into your work and on this Board of Education. The decisions you make will be a reflection of your understanding and empathy for students and for our youth. Speaking to you is a privilege that I'm grateful to have, but it is not easily accessible to all of our students. Our system tends to praise students for being academically successful and active within their school communities, and we have good reason to applaud them. However, we also must begin to recognize that every student in this county is worthy of an opportunity to find their passion and success and are uplifted to do so in every regard. The reality that both you and I are aware of is that not every student has access to resources outside of school hours. Many of our students are overwhelmed with circumstances both within and outside of their control and do not find the support they need to grow outside of who they are as academic learners. What you fail to acknowledge is that this issue is not just case by case or school by school. It is systemic. It is a systemic issue that you have the power and ability to mitigate. Therefore, I implore you to support student member of the Board Christian Thomas's endeavors to create an Office of Student Engagement, which will create opportunities for low-income students and actively foster their passion and prepare them for opportunities and experiences they will encounter. The Office of Student Engagement would be a necessary strive towards equity for students who are currently not able to participate in extracurriculars and will undoubtedly value student engagement with a lens of empathy, a much-needed concept in every decision made on the Board. Knowledge without passion creates an echo chamber without progress. Our schools and systems must not be an echo chamber. I continue to ask you to make your decisions on the operating budget with empathy for students outside of those whom you interact with on a frequent basis. Consider the students who aren't here, but who are just as essential and valuable as the students who are. I ask you to take the passion from our voice and create a school environment that amplifies rather than echoes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rochelle Wilkinson, and on deck will be Bill Wilkinson.
Ms. Hen, I don't believe either one are signed on.
Thank you, Ms. Gober. The next speaker is Aziza Mataka, and on deck will be Sabrina Fowler.
Good evening, Baltimore County Board of Education. My name is Aziza Mataka, and I'm a senior at Eastern Tech. And today, I wanted to bring your attention to a problem that must be addressed in our operating budget. Imagine sitting in class and taking a test, and all of a sudden, you start to sense something, a feeling. It's a familiar one. This feeling is sometimes uncomfortable, and it comes with headaches and lower stomach pains. This type of feeling tends to visit you regularly, once a month, to be exact, for a duration of five to eight days. Now, although this feeling is not universal, I take it that we've all been in a basic anatomy class and know that the feeling I was alluding to is a menstrual cycle. Going back to the earlier scenario, once you've realized that you've been visited by your monthly cycle, you have three choices. A, search your bag for hygiene products that you know you forgot to carry that day. B, run to the bathroom, text your friends, and hope one of them can become your Walgreens. Or C, sign up to go to the nurse, wait 20 minutes behind other students just to get a large and slightly uncomfortable pad, then go to the bathroom, and then back to your class where you've now missed 1/4 of the lesson plan. As students, this type of payoff should not be running through our minds if we are trying to pay attention to our learning. All the choices I've provided are true stories that I've heard from other students that go to different schools in Baltimore County. Students that have been disappointed time after time because they go to the bathrooms and see dispensers that are empty. And in the rare cases that products are provided, students don't know where or how to access them. I find it concerning that a process so common and natural is barely accounted for and yet has the ability to impact our focus on education so much. Maryland House Bill 208 states that each county's Board of Education would be required to ensure that each public school provides free menstrual hygiene products via dispensers and restrooms at every school. And although this bill has been completely passed, I encourage the Board of Education to take the initiative to end this easily resolvable distraction. By making it easier for students to access menstrual hygiene products, we take away the uncertainty and the chaos of trying to solve this problem in schools ourselves. I ask the Board of Education to find a way to give students access to quality menstrual hygiene products in an efficient way in operating budget. This year, our senior classes had a very innovative way to solve problems. So here, I bring part of my learning to you through what my allied health teacher calls a "how might we" statement. I asked the Board, how might we ensure students have access to quality menstrual hygiene products so that we can put a greater focus on our education? After all, we can only begin to expand our minds once our physiological needs are met. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sabrina Fowler, and on deck will be Jean Millstein.
Good evening, Chair Hen, Vice Chair Pastor, and Superintendent Williams, and the members of the Board. My name is Sabrina Fowler, and I'm a 10th-grade student at Eastern Technical High School. I am here urging you specifically to make allowances in the FY 2023 operating budget to follow through on the promises you made in the LGBTQ+ inclusion resolution that was passed this past August. This means allotting money to the development of gender-neutral facilities like bathrooms and funding enhanced social emotional supports and policies that accommodate the unique needs of trans, non-binary, and gender-fluid students. BCPS has the opportunity at this moment to become an incubator for empowered, expressive, and inclusive stakeholders, especially for those students who go home to unsafe, non-inclusive households. By leaving the development of gender-neutral bathrooms out of the budget, you sustain a toxic binary paradigm of gender that denies the authenticity of so many students' identities. I remember watching the Board's debate over the LGBTQ+ inclusion resolution back in August and feeling alarmed that our unelected officials considered trans inclusion to be so expendable and negotiable. Now, we lie at a crossroads for the future of this resolution, and it's important to reiterate the true consequence and urgency of the initial legislation proposed by student member of the Board Christian Thomas. The FY 2023 operating budget is an opportunity to codify the inclusive principles of the resolution and to do more than merely virtue signal constituents. In response to some of the concerns brought up at the August meeting, I want to highlight a 2018 study that found that trans-inclusive bathrooms don't increase the risk of "attacks on cisgender people," a phenomenon that opponents to trans inclusion have posited. In fact, research proves that the discomfort is felt inversely. When trans people are forced to use bathrooms misaligned with their identity, they're susceptible to verbal harassment and physical assault. It should not be a privilege to anticipate that when you use a bathroom, especially at school, you will be treated with respect. Nationwide, 150,000 people ages 13 to 17 identify as trans, and this number is increasing rapidly. Thanks to the work of activists, leaders, scholars, and media, society has grown in the past decade alone to be vastly more inclusive of trans and gender-nonconforming people, especially among youth. By acting quickly to fulfill your promises in the LGBTQ+ inclusion resolution in this operating budget, you send a message to BCPS students that you are perceptive of their needs and care about fostering truly humane and safe environments, as the definition of safety itself evolves. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jean Millstein, and on deck will be Michelle Wang.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Hen, Vice Chair Pastor, Dr. Williams, and members of the Board. My name is Jenny Millstein, and I am a paraeducator at a comprehensive high school and ESAL center. I am encouraged to see the increase in funding of both special education and ESAL services as both are sorely needed. However, I have to say I am concerned by what I see as a reliance on contractors and contractual services in this new budget. I seek contractors and talking. Additional adult assistants, cafeteria workers, and kindergarten assistants all work tirelessly for BCPS, many of them with some of our most vulnerable populations, and many of them at an hourly rate far less than they would earn elsewhere. I am therefore happy to see that the proposed budget increases pay for AAs and other staff above that of minimum wage starting in July of 2022. Thank you. This begins... This begins to close the gap. However, we are in the middle of a pandemic. If I, as a paraeducator, get sick, I can see a doctor without worrying about cost. Contractual employees without benefits are not afforded this necessity. Can we please move towards closing that gap as well? We are, after all, Team BCPS. I also see that BCPS is moving towards using outside contractors for substitute hiring. I do have to wonder if such hiring is penny wise but pound foolish. Wouldn't it make more sense for us to grow our capacity as a system? For example, by increasing staffing in HR and hiring internally rather than relying on external vendors? Raising the bar for ourselves and, for instance, our appropriately-supported HR department is, in the long term, the only way to close the gap on staffing in order to prepare for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michelle Wang, and on deck will be Amy Adams.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Michelle Wang, and I'm a junior at Delaney High School. I'd like to start off by saying that the last time I was here in November, I talked about opting for a more inclusive calendar. And today, I'm here to discuss the four ways that the operating budget can be better spent. The first being AP exams. It costs $96 to take a single exam. This is extremely high. I'm taking five exams, and my sister is taking six. That's a combined cost of $1,056 for my family. Although there are fee waivers, this isn't enough. I urge the Board to allocate more funds towards subsidizing the cost of AP exams. Instead of bringing students from high achievement through the costly exam, we should be encouraging them to take these higher-level classes by reducing the cost. Secondly, COVID relief supplies. Last week, my school distributed one testing kit and one KN95 mask per student. That was it. These masks are not supposed to be reused, yet we only received one, which was supposed to last us for weeks. This is not enough for COVID relief. As BCPS navigates the pandemic, supplies such as testing kits and masks must be more widely available for students. If you're asking us, may demanding us to be back in person at least give us the proper protection supplies. A simple surgical mask is not adequate for our protection and safety. There must be more measures, more supplies, and more revenue dedicated towards COVID mitigation and prevention. Thirdly, increasing funding for support staff must be a priority. Certainly, my high school, Delaney, only has one school psychologist. Having a single psychologist is not enough to address the needs of the 2,000 students in a single high school. It's clear that students' mental health have suffered during the pandemic and are still suffering from the anxiety and uncertainty from the pandemic and stress from schools. School psychologists are critical, and allocating an increased portion of the budget towards school psychologists and support staff is a necessity. Police counselors and social workers should not be taken for granted and must be available for all students who need them. Lastly, free and reduced meals for students. I appreciate how the county has already done so recently amid the pandemic. This should be continued for students throughout the pandemic and possibly beyond. These meals are critical for low-income and food insecure students. I urge that more funds should be ensured that meals are continuing to be provided at a free and affordable price and also be healthy and nutritious to students. In summary, I list four things: reducing the cost of AP exams, COVID mitigation supplies, psychologists and support staff, and free and reduced meals. We should prioritize all of these things in addition to allocating the budget to reduce the achievement gap between students and make sure that every classroom is well-equipped and supplied with resources as well as funding programs such as Avid and ESOL. This budget directly affects needs, and that priority should be reducing administrative costs and spending dollars in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Adams, and on deck will be Jen Reedholm.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a parent and a taxpayer, I want to see our school system use this enormous and complicated budget in the most efficient way possible. I want staff to be happy and committed to working. I want buildings and buses to be properly maintained every year to maximize safety and function. But most importantly, I want BCPS students to be successfully educated. We should see improvements in academic proficiency, and IEP and compensatory services should be provided to every child who needs it. I think most people feel the same. I am perplexed as to why the proposed budget is asking for $115 million increase over the maintenance of efforts for the following reasons: One, staff has reported that for the previous several years, BCPS has had a $30 million surplus in May for the BAC. Two, our system has shrunk with less students enrolling over the last two years. Three, BCPS has received a record amount of grant funding totaling $362 million over five years. I understand this money is temporary and cannot fund anything long-term, but it is still available for use next year. Fourth, the superintendent's cabinet reorganization will reportedly save $1.7 million next year. Seems like we are off to a slow start of saving the possible $39 million over five years as stated in the Public Works Review. I do believe in funding people over technology. I want to see all positions filled with qualified and dedicated people. I've listened to budget committee meetings, and I really like the directive to survey principals and gather data on what each specific school needs. I would like to see the money being used at the schoolhouse level for more efficient local operations. I think it's crucial to spend money wisely. Recently, the curriculum department has spent millions on multiple new programs and materials. I think it's important to provide extensive professional development to teachers so these materials are most impactful in the classroom and benefit the students. Money should not be spent without follow-through and positive results. I and many others are looking for accountability for the money spent on curriculum and fidelity of implementation and for professional development so that the gaps are closing. That is our motto, after all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jen Reedholm, and on deck will be Carol Vidal.
Hello.
Yes, Ms. Reedholm?
Oh, yep, thank you. Hello to everyone. Thank you for allowing the public to provide feedback on the proposed operating budget. I would like for you to consider the areas of special education and substitute teacher pay. Substitute teacher pay must be increased due to the enormous need in this area. The current daily pay rate is barely over minimum wage. Why would anyone choose a job to basically be abused at those rates instead of working at a retail store and not have to deal with out-of-control classroom behaviors? This is so much more important than retail and should be compensated as such. I am a current substitute with my teaching degree without certification. Perhaps paying those with a teaching degree at an hourly rate that is at least double the current degree rate, you may get more people like me and others to take more jobs. Currently, I'm very selective about which jobs I take due to the low pay. I worked corporate America, and I own my own business, so it's hard for me to fathom working for barely over minimum wage as a highly educated woman. I often consider taking a full-time teaching job, but the call to get certified stops me. Substitutes are viewed as nothing more than a glorified babysitter, so why not fund continuing education and provide more incentives so they can be truly an extension of teachers in the classroom? Onboarding new substitutes is also problematic when you make them pay nearly $80 for the fingerprinting and background check that is not reimbursed and also require a two-hour unpaid training. That doesn't attract new people. Things that should... These things should be budgeted for to attract more quality employees to the job, and maybe someone who wants to become a full-time teacher can be placed on a career path to achieve that. Also, special education has always been severely underfunded. Programs for 2E or twice-exceptional students currently don't exist, especially for summer. 2E students have high IQs but have learning differences. They're not typically eligible for non-public placement because they're so high-functioning and don't learn like typical peers. Also, there is... Where's the tutoring money that was supposedly available to students? No one I know received it, and I know a lot of special-needs families who could have benefited from it. Finally, BCPS must be more competitive with the service provider salaries because they end up elsewhere in the private sector making more. They don't want to stay in an institution that undervalues them. When I ask for things for my special needs fund in order for him to be successful, I'm consistently met with statements like "we don't have staff", "budget", or "unable to provide what's truly needed". I heard at a recent BCPS meeting that money allocated for compensatory services was being considered to be reallocated to teacher bonuses. Stealing from the poor is beyond inexcusable. The legally required compensatory services was severely underestimated on purpose, and halfway through the year, they have not even been served one single minute. The delays need to stop, and the money needs to stay there and should be increased. Special education needs to be the absolute highest priority over any other need in our school system right now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carol Vidal, and on deck will be Basfaron.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a parent of children in BCPS, and I watched the Board meeting last week and was inspired by Dr. Williams' budget and its focus on people. I'm also impressed with the PowerPoint presentation our Board member Ms. Max shared on her social media page, and I support all that's said in those presentations. I'm just here as a parent to support the trend of this administration and Board to invest in people first. Ms. Max's presentation proposed ensuring that we have smaller classes so that children can learn well. Smaller classes allow teachers to teach better, to know their students well, and to build relationships. The focus on people is not only on teachers, but also on paraeducators and substitutes to support the teachers and on TMA's to support nurses. The focus on increasing special education resources at the school level also makes sense not only to help a growing population in need of special education services, but also to prevent the placement of those children in much more expensive schools that end up costing the system more money for less children served. And with increasing behavioral problems, providing enough counselors and mental health providers, such as psychologists and social workers, is key. Some systems like Baltimore City have contracted services with self-funded outside mental health organizations who serve as clinics located in the school while billing the families with medical assistance. With the changing demographics and higher percentage of students on Medicaid, many schools could benefit from that service and would ensure that teachers can focus on teaching and not on managing behaviors. I also agree principals should be given more autonomy and funding for their own schools. We have learned this during the pandemic. At the end, it is easier to manage a huge and diverse system like BCPS by allowing principals who know the realities of their communities better to respond to people on the ground. Schools will have different needs, and principals need to be able to respond to those needs quickly. And finally, and the main reason why I want to speak today is because we may not be able to fund schools the way we want, and we may need to cut corners. I'm here to ask that if anything gets cut, this should be the multitude of online curriculums offered. Just like virtual did not work, the online reading programs and math programs offered, as well as programs like the Online Channel Program, have not improved academic outcomes over the years and have been difficult for children and parents to navigate. Just like teachers need training to be able to use them, while children need time to adapt to them and to get the content that's trying to deliver. In this case, less is more. After all, there are plenty of online resources that are free and that parents already access at their own convenience. Those are much more easier to navigate, much easier to navigate than schooly, and there is still nothing compared to having a teacher in the classroom. Our schools should not be focused on providing more of the same or a different version of materials that are already available online. And the school students in this system spend too much time trying to find their assignments hidden in schooly and not enough focusing on content. We don't need more programs to teach our children. We need more people to do it. Without of that, BCPS needs going first-hand through websites, virtual meetings, and platforms, but what it needs more is teachers who teach in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Basfaron, and on deck will be Erica Ma.
Good evening, Chairwoman Hen, Vice Chair Pastor, and Dr. Williams. The Central Area Advisory Council is eager to see the operating budget to include adequate number of foreign language teachers for Italian, Arabic, and Chinese languages. I am concerned that if the operating budget did not specify those positions, then it would not really be done. Why do we need to teach a foreign second language? For one, it's better opportunities of business for our students. For two, the federal government and the state government agencies do need fluent speakers in Arabic and Chinese. We, the nation, need to communicate and understand other cultures. It's better business. And for three, foreign languages as second language make the students round and make them more thoughtful and a better judgment, and it's broadening their minds and their taste. I would like to commend the superintendent, the school system, and the Board of Education on the increase in the operating budget. However, let us be careful that when we take more money from the state and the county, that means there are less funds for our roads and social programs and open space and helping the needy. Now, the state seems to have surplus of several billion dollars, which is really good news, and it's good to look for that as a source of revenue. However, I would like to see the school system, the Board of Education, building up and strengthening our BCPS foundation so the foundation may have more funds to support the school system. The foundation is a tax-exempt entity, and the county residents, when they would be donating to the foundation, they are helping their own students. They are making the foundation stronger. It will give more breathing room budget-wise for the school system. Last but not least, I know everybody wants to increase all kinds of positions, including myself. I believe county residents pay more than their fair share of taxes, so we must be careful. We need to take care of our educators. We need to take care of other needs in the school system. But I do not think we need to set the stage to raise taxes. Again, I thank you for the opportunity, and I thank you for this complex and really thoughtful proposed operating budget.
Thank you. The next speaker is Erica Ma, and on deck will be Mary Taylor.
Am I... Did I work my mute button correctly?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Williams, my name is Erica Ma, and I'm a parent at Gainesville High and a teacher at Landon Elementary. First of all, thank you, thank you, for a budget that focuses on people in the schoolhouse. As an ESOL teacher who just added another eight students to her school's caseload since winter break, I thank you for the increase of ESOL staff by 44 members. We are literally drowning in our numbers, but we love our students and want to help them all. But there are simply not enough hours in the day or staff in our school. Additional staff is needed and welcome. But where are these teachers going to come from, especially as we compete with other counties nearby with similar needs and demands? Let me introduce you to ALICE. ALICE is a term used by the United Way that stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. This is the population of Marylanders who are above the poverty level, who have jobs but struggle to make ends meet when paying for housing, childcare, transportation, food, healthcare, and basic cell phone service. In short, ALICE stands for those who make just enough to sustain their basic needs. It is the level of survival. In 2018, the United Way calculated the amount needed for two adults with two children to be approximately $78,000. With childcare, it's $92,000. For a single parent with one child in childcare, it's $58,000. Look at our pay scale. That family of four, assuming one parent is at home with the young children, cannot survive on a teacher's salary ever. With a master's, the family would be at that rate of survival by year 16. True, most families nowadays do have two working parents, and that does mean childcare for the children, which brings the ALICE number up to $92,000, which means a two-teacher family can just survive on their starting salary. And that single parent cannot survive until they have worked for nine years in our school system. Those are teachers. What about our hourly employees? Starting ALICE wage for a single adult is $16.58 an hour. For a single parent, $25 an hour. For a family of four, $38 an hour. I'm not sure you really want me to compare our ESPBC or ASME hourly wages to ALICE wages because frankly, in some cases, those hourly wages don't even show up on our charts. No matter what grade and how many years some ESPBC and ASME members have been working for our school system, they will never be able to survive on a BCPS salary. And remember, ALICE means surviving. Is that really what we want for those who take care of our children day in and day out? And frankly, who is going to come work for BCPS if their salary is only to survive? No one gets into the education field to make money. But I think it's safe to say that we want to do more than survive. We will not fill these positions without salary increases, especially for our critical ESPBC and ASME members. We will not fill positions with missing steps. We will not fill these if paychecks are incorrect. And we will not fill these if insurance is still not accurate two weeks into the new year during a pandemic. Please take care of your employees, all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Taylor, and on deck will be Josiah Lookingbill.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Over the past year, parents and stakeholders in BCPS have raised many tenant-related concerns, including concerns about the state of the building. And while BCPS Facilities has inspected all the systems to make sure they're up to code, the mechanical code is a minimum standard, and ASRA, the organization that sets the references for building codes, has issued references for building codes, has issued additional guidance for improving ventilation and filtration in schools during the pandemic. BCPS has completed the recommended inspection and maintenance and increased the ventilation where possible. However, they have not followed through on the additional recommended steps, which are to increase filters to MERV thirteen or better for recirculated air by providing portable HEPA air filter, air cleaners. And many of our schools continue to be portally ventilated and are operating without filtration. SARS-CoV-2 is an airborne virus, and we cannot ventilate the spaces. The air needs to be filtered to a minimum of MERV thirteen standards. And while some schools have purchased or received donated air filters for all classrooms, most of the schools across the county do not have hair, air purifiers in all classrooms. In addition, this is important for the budget consideration because adding air filters to our school will improve the air quality in schools in the long term as well. And many parts of Baltimore County have high numbers of students with asthma. Many students and staff have seasonal allergies, and some of our schools have mold, asbestos, or other air quality issues. The Baltimore area has high rates of fine particle pollution in indoor air, which many studies have demonstrated impact the health and learning outcome of students. This is not just a pandemic issue, this is an issue of equity and justice for all students in Baltimore County who deserve to breathe clean air in school. While COVID relief money can be used for the initial purchase, replacement filters are also needed on a six-month to annual basis. There must be part, this must be part of the budget planning process. Air purifiers work to help stop the spread of COVID-19 according to the EPA, CDC, OSHA, ASHR, and many scientific studies. They also help improve learning conditions for our students. There is no drawback to providing cleaner air for our students and staff. For more information or questions and to get involved, you can follow Dr. Elizabeth Dow at Air Filtration for Baltimore County and Greater Baltimore Area Schools on Facebook to sign a petition for school studies and for more scientific provided information. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening. Good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Josiah Lookingbill, and on deck will be Andy Salim-Higgins.
Thank you. Did I unmute properly?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, Chair Hen, Vice Chair Pastor, Superintendent Williams, and all members of the board. My name is Josiah Lookingbill. I am a math teacher at Woodland High School, and I want to note how BCPS could better facilitate learning for our students. The first item that, the first way that we could facilitate the learning for our students is to pay our adult assistants, our highly skilled adult assistants, what they need to take care of themselves as they take care of our students. I have seen several students with legally mandated needs that have been unmet this school year, and I notice that this is not unique to this school year. Every year, lack of, lack of staffing has impeded student success. Additionally, every year, I see my, my co-teaching special educators, but they manage caseloads that are untenable. Special educators need to have the space to effectively teach and often are pulled to substitute for other classes or have multiple extra meetings. Others need the time to effectively connect with student needs. Creative staffing is needed, so it is no wonder we see such great turnover in our adult assistants and special educators. This ultimately becomes a matter of safety. When students don't receive the supports they need or enough adult supports, it is shown in, in the behaviors, and we do not have at the moment enough staff, adults, to support the student needs that are there. If safety is our true north, it is only possible with significant increases from what has been the norm. Thank you for our, for your attention to our students' needs. Please fully fund our adult assistants and increase supports for our special education staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker for the night is Andy Salim-Higgins.
Thank you. Just want to say hello, good evening to Chair Hen, Vice Chair Pastor, Superintendent Williams, and the rest of the BCPS school board members. I'm Andy Salim-Higgins. I'm a parent at Newtown High School located in Owens Mills. And so, over the past decade, Owens Mills and Randos Town, it's had a lot of new construction, and that's a good thing, and it's even more scheduled. The challenge is that it has led to overcrowding. And so, on page fourteen of the 2023 budget, I was heartened to see more money being spent towards teachers, cost of living adjustments, and several other increases that are much needed. The challenge is, it always seems like our children get lost in the numbers, such that student teacher, student teacher ratios aren't really effectively addressed. And so, what I'm hopeful of is that we are deeply committed to our children receiving a high quality of, of education, our teachers and staff being compensated properly, and towards that end, having an ongoing conversation with parents, teachers, students, and staff so that this is constantly being monitored. And it's not just a fiscal year thing or one meeting thing, but so that we're constantly checking in and even reevaluating to make sure that this money is being spent effectively because ultimately, our children are the ones who get lost in the sauce. My second point is, I honestly hope I never get to the point where I say losing two thousand people isn't a big deal. So there are over eight hundred and fifty thousand families who've been impacted by COVID in terms of losing a loved one. And there, there are many statistics that say a majority of the people who've been infected by COVID will have, will develop some sort of long-term symptom. Personally, I had an eleven-year-old nephew rushed to the hospital only several days ago, and my father was just released from the hospital, and so it's, it's very pressing to me. And so, you know, again, I was heartened to see under safe and supportive environment that we're going to add twenty-two health assistants, and we're, and we're putting numbers towards that. My concern is that this conversation only takes place as it relates to students who have experienced virtual learning, but we're not taking into account the people who've actually lost members. So at some point in time, I think we're all hopeful that two, three, four, five years from now, we'll speak about virtual learning in the past tense, remember when. But there are people right now who've lost family members and who have long-term symptoms who are being impacted. And so, I'm hopeful that, that in the language, because that's where I'm not seeing it, in the language, we're also taking them into account. Last thing is, I want to say thank you to Ms. Shaw, Pat Vice Chair, Shaw Pastor, Ms. Makita Scott, Mr. Dwayne Bazemore, Ms. Rachel Jones, and Mr. James Martin, the principal at Newtown High School, because in this conversation about whether we should come back and when the numbers were going up, it seemed like there was only one group of voices being heard, and I'm so thankful that these members were listening and attentive, so much so that in particular, Makita Scott, Ms. Bazemore, Ms. Jones, actually reached out with phone calls. So I just want to thank you for being true partners, and thank you all.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker for the night. I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to come to participate in the hearing on the FY 2023 operating budget. The next item on the agenda is announcements. The board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, 2022, at 6:30 PM. At this time, the board will be going into a closed administrative function session. Thank you all for joining us this evening.